Good morning, everybody. It is 10:00 AM on November 18th, 2025. Lynda Merkin, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors, and I would invite you, if you would so choose, to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic in which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is approved. And now we have public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. And we have somebody who would like to address this and to make an introduction. So if you would come forward and please turn on your microphones.
Good morning, Ly. I'm not going to take but a minute of your time, but I wanted to come over and introduce the new mayor-elect of Zering, who will be taking over, Mr. Marlon Beard. And Marlon, this is Lynda Merkin.
Hi.
And Latifah Basil. And Lisa Headen is not present today. And all I can say is, these ladies have helped me a lot, and they're always there to help if you ask, and they usually have some advice, and usually it's pretty good. Well, thank you.
Oh, that is a glowing endorsement. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, and thank you for all of your service to your city and to Story County, and we appreciate that, and welcome.
Thank you.
And we look forward to having a good working relationship with you.
Look forward to that, too.
He's leaving behind a well-run ship.
I agree.
So congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
He'll do a fine job.
Mm-hmm.
And I might coach him a little at first, but he doesn't need, he won't need much coaching.
Okay.
I need a lot.
You have a good coach there.
Thank you.
He cares a lot about his town, about the people in it, and you'll make a good team moving forward.
Look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thanks.
Is there anybody else?
Okay.
Good to see, good to see you. Okay. Okay. Looking forward to it. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment, either in person or online? If you're online, raise your hand. I see no hands raised. I see nobody moving to the desk. So I will close public comment period. And we have a couple recognitions of retirements here. And I don't know, Sheriff, did you want to say something? Do you want to help us out with this?
Make sure you turn your microphone on.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address this today. We are always sad when we see good people leave the office. And this is the end of this month. We're going to have that experience doubled. First of all, John Osmerson was the first civilian jailer that we hired, first detention officer. And it was kind of unnerving to think we're going to be moving deputies out of there and just have civilians run it. Well, John being one of the first experiences a lot of those things, and it helped me through to where we are today. And because of John, he, his work ethic is incredible. He went from a detention officer to a supervisor to the assistant jail administrator, and then made it to the jail administration director personally. So, John, I thank you for that and all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Next, we have Leanna Ellis. Now, John has 28 and a half years.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six and a half years. And Leanna, she has 24 and a half years. Something about leaving with a half year kind of hang. Twenty-three now. It'll be, anyway. Leanna started out as a detention officer. Then she tested for a deputy position and went to the road. And I think you started off third shift on the road, didn't you? And she worked there, and she was quickly recognized for her abilities and talents. And then she was promoted to sergeant. And then soon after sergeant, she went to lieutenant and as a division commander. Leanna is the first woman that I've had that was a field services division commander, meaning she oversees patrol, detectives, drug task force, and the person, the deputy we have detailed to the FBI in Des Moines. So anyway, both these two have been outstanding. Personally, I'm going to miss them terribly, but I'm sure they'll come around for coffee now and then.
I'll leave that as a comment out of this, okay?
John, you want to say anything?
No, just thank you. Thank you all. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks.
Yeah, command staff, they were always big talkers, so. Well, thank you very much.
Well, let us say thank you as well. And this is an incredible amount of years that you spend the sheriff's office coming up from the ranks and knowing, you know, all the jobs, knowing everything about your divisions, and just wonderful service to Story County. So I want to thank you. And Supervisor Basil, do you have something to say?
Just want to add, the many years that I worked in the county attorney's office and had the opportunity to reach out to you and your teams with questions or help with lots of different things. And then my years on the board and the many other questions I've had, you have responded immediately. If you didn't have an answer, you got the answers for us. Your dedication to Story County and the people that you serve, the quality of service in the jail, the way treated, people are treated in our jail has always made me very proud to be in Story County. Oh, my goodness, you guys. Just thank you for your many years of service and the support that you've provided to all of us.
And we have a couple plaques we'd like to present to you. And I also think we probably want to get a picture. And I would invite everybody who's with the sheriff's office here to come and join us in the picture. So you would come up here. Can you see everybody? You mean you? Hmm, that's moving.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now we have an agency report coming up. Laura Severson and Kalen Peterson, RSVP, please come forward. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. Another milestone.
I think this works. Yes. Okay, well, I think you got a copy of our annual report. So it's always kind of fun for me to be able to present this. And, you know, while Laura and I were working on this, I think my favorite thing about the annual report is at the end, I can see the culmination of all the accomplishments that our volunteers have had collectively throughout our four county service area. So just wanted to hit a couple highlights. The front page highlight, of course, is our transportation program. Turned 15, actually January 1st last year. And, you know, I look back on that and I think, I remember when Frankie Olson contacted me and said, would you consider doing a pilot project and see about maybe providing some supplemental transportation services utilizing volunteers? So that kind of got the ball rolling and our wheels turning. And there was a lot to accomplish in that first few months in terms of policies, procedures, and then recruitment of volunteers and clients, and marketing the program. And we didn't want to be in a situation where we had, you know, 20 volunteers and three clients, but we also didn't want to have 30 clients and three volunteers. So it was kind of a balancing act. So when I look back on that and look at it now, it just, it makes me proud to think what our volunteers have done through this program. So I think you can see the statistics. I do have one correction, though. I told Lori yesterday, I go, that number doesn't sound right. So I went back and looked again. So in 2024, which was calendar year, 2024, we actually had 44 volunteers that provided 1,650 rides, not 1,068. So I don't know, I don't know what happened there, but, but that is the actual figure. The program continues to grow because I looked in, and so far to date in 2025, we're at, and this is literally to date as of yesterday, we're at 1,720 rides already this year. And that still was six weeks left in the fiscal year. So we're continuing to see growth in that. Really, the clientele is kind of balanced off. We serve somewhere between 70 and 75 individuals each year. I would say like the last three or four years have been kind of in that ballpark. But much needed, as you'll be able to see hopefully from the testimonials that we get from the clients that we're serving.
You want to talk about the partnership with Ollie?
Yeah, this last year, we partnered with ISU Alumni Association to just continue to get the word out to people in our, you know, the demographic for our volunteers. So we were able to do some advertising in like the Ollie Course Catalog and ISU retirees. But one thing that they helped us do, which is great, and I would encourage you to check it out on just the main homepage of our website, is a video that just one minute kind of talks about RSVP, the impact of the different things that we do, and from the volunteer's perspective of what they get to do and why they enjoy it. So that was a really neat thing to be able to do to also help get the word out about RSVP, so.
Yeah, we're trying to have it not be the best kept secret in Story County. So another thing, and this isn't really reflected in the annual report, but about three years ago, we started conducting an annual survey of our volunteers just so we could capture not, through our federal reporting, we have to capture the impact of the services that they're providing. But we wanted to see about the impact that it has on their lives. And so that, that first year, and Annika United Way at that time helped us develop the, sort of the survey and what we needed to glean from that. So that baseline survey, we had 163 respondents. And we had about 95% of those respondents, they had several things that they could answer, but about 95% said they feel that volunteering contributes in a positive way to their overall well-being, physical, emotional, social, and intellectual. And we kind of assumed that, but it was kind of nice to just get that affirmation from our volunteers saying, yes, this is really important in my life for me, not just the service that they're providing, but also to the volunteers themselves. Another thing we wanted to kind of show, our features on the inside, we have our disaster services. So of course, when there's not a natural disaster or some emergency that needs to be addressed, we still try to continue to keep our volunteers engaged and to continue to provide services in that area. So we've done, working with Nick Brazinho at the Story County Sheriff's Office, we've continued to do the TIP Hotline training. So that we have, I think roughly about 20 volunteers that are prepared to staff the TIP Hotline in the event of a missing or abducted child or person. And Nick does those trainings, and we try to do at least two a year to kind of keep those volunteers fresh. There is a, there is an art to that. It's not just picking up the phone and being able to answer it. There's certain things that come up that the volunteers need to be able to address when they get those calls coming in. We also started in 2024 and have continued to be involved with PrepWise. It's a disaster preparedness initiative through University of Iowa. And we have volunteers that are trained to, they're speaking to groups, but they also are called interventionists so they can help. It really targets older adults to be prepared to shelter in place for three days if needed so they can have a personalized disaster preparedness plan. So we've been continuing to do that. We had presentations to 138 residents last fiscal year on that, and we're also continuing to do that this year. And then our fraud fighters is through the Iowa Department of Insurance and Financial Services, and it's really getting information out to retirees, pre-retirees, older adults about how to avoid being a victim of scams and frauds. So we really have been ramping that up and had 342 individuals this last fiscal year that were a part of those programs. So, so that was, that was good. You want to talk a little bit, oh, you talk about PENPAL, and then I'll address Basil, then.
Yeah, so this last year, we were able to, well, this school year, we have ramped up the schools that we've been able to get back in touch with for the PENPAL program. So historically, it rolled in story. We've been in a couple classes in the elementary school for a long time, but we were able to get started with the fifth grade class in the middle school. So added about 80 kids that are working on their letter writing skills. It kind of have that intergenerational relationship with someone through the mail, and then they meet at the end of the year at a PENPAL party. And we also got back into the Nevada school system. I think COVID was kind of when that stopped. So we're in one third grade class and then four, third and fourth grade classrooms. So that was a little over 100 kids. So getting back in touch with a lot of those folks in the community, and then also engaging more volunteers in our local community to do that. Kind of revamped the program to make it a little more streamlined and easier for the teachers so that it's built into the curriculum. It's less of a feeling of, gosh, that's one more thing that, you know, we have to take on, and little things that we've been able to do to make it just easier for them. So hoping to continue to grow that. But it was nice to be able to get almost 200 more kids involved in that here in Story County.
Yeah, that's great. And then one other thing I wanted to let you know was going to be happening is if you look on the inside of your annual report where it says basing your fitness. So for the past 11 years, this is a program that we developed up in Hamilton and Webster County, working with physical therapists and, I had that backwards, physical therapist and also some rehabilitation specialists that helped us develop the exercise routine so it would be safe and it would be effective. And up in those two counties, it's exploded. We're in, I think, 17 locations now. And we have 25 volunteers that are trained leaders that, that provide the fitness classes. We hadn't really had an opportunity to pursue that here in Story County. I think one of the things that makes the demographic of Hamilton and Webster different is it's very rural, and there aren't as many places where seniors have that opportunity. Whereas I feel in Story County, we, a lot of the communities have an opportunity for seniors to be part of an affordable fitness program, but not all of them. And we're very fortunate. We had a volunteer who moved to Nevada, who was a part of a program similar to this in Minnesota, and was interested in becoming a base leader. And so the wheels started turning, and it's been several months getting this rolling. But we will kick off a base program in Colo, starting December 9th will be the first class. And we kind of targeted Colo because it's close to Nevada for our volunteer. Nevada really has options and opportunities, but Colo didn't so much. So we've, you know, secured a location there that's, that's been donated, and that's going to start up. We have an informational meeting at the library this Friday. And hopefully, we will get a lot of people coming that will be interested in participating. We also reached out to the city of Zering to let them know that this is available as well. But it's been a really great program, one of our signature programs up in Hamilton and Webster. So we're really glad to kind of get that going in some of the smaller communities. And we might be able to extend it. It was kind of one of my goals before I'm done. So got that. Just wrapping up, I want to thank you for your support of RSVP, obviously over the past year, but over many years, and, and for supporting me as well. So I will be retiring December 31st, but I'm leaving it in very good hands. So I feel really good about the future of our program and, and it's just been a privilege. So thank you.
Thank you. And I did ask Kalen earlier, now, how long have you been doing this?
Thirty-six and a half years.
Thirty-six and a half years.
Actually, I've been with RSVP 36 and a half years, the first two as a volunteer coordinator. So, yeah, but a long time.
That's wonderful, all the time that you've given to Story County and to RSVP. And I understand there's going to be a reception. Can you tell us when that is?
Yep, December 16th, so it's a Tuesday. It'll be up at the Story City Community Center from 3:00 to 6:00. So kind of an open house format, and yeah. Welcome anyone to come.
Wonderful.
So do you have any questions? I guess I didn't ask about our report or?
Well, you know, I did have one, as you're talking about this base, senior fitness.
Uh huh.
I had been talking with Deb Sheldrith a few years ago, before they built the new center in Ames, and just asking what Heartland was doing now in some of the other communities. And I just wanted, you know, they said, well, we've really got our hands full right now. You know, building, you know, 60 Forward. But once we get that going and on, on, you know, on its feet, we'll be looking at doing some more things out in the county. So I wondered if you had talked with Deb and tried to coordinate with this, what their plan was?
I talked to Deb quite a bit. I haven't talked to her specifically about this, but I'm actually going to be in that building this afternoon. So I did also reach out to Sherri Zook with Public Health because I know that she does the Bingo Size programs that are available. I think it's 60 Forward that they're doing. So yes, I will absolutely touch base with Deb and make sure she's aware of this and so that they can also promote it to, you know, their clients that, that might benefit from, from base.
And I think that there's really a need with seniors in our communities, and it's a growing number of just people that need, needs something to reach out, you know, something to occupy their time, something that helps their health, and something that helps with the sense of community, so.
Well, and with base, it's balance agility, strength, and endurance. But all the participants up in the Hamilton, Webster County area, I always say it should be bases because the S being socialization. So for a lot of them, it's an opportunity for them to get out. They socialize. Sometimes they plan coffee and treats afterwards or whatever, so exercise and then eat a donut, but whatever, right?
Well, and they were talking about it at the Story County Economic Development Group meeting this last month or three weeks ago. I don't know. There's a lot of excitement. Everybody around the table was very excited to hear Colo talking about the program coming. Zering is very excited.
Good.
And I think there's a lot of excitement throughout the county, hoping maybe that will spread even more. Because, yeah, the need is great, and it's so important for, for all of us, but especially for, for folks who don't, don't have the opportunity to get out anymore, so.
Yep, we're hoping to really kind of just target those smaller rural communities that just don't have an opportunity to do that. And it's a really well-developed program, too. So I feel really good about bringing that to Story County. So I am also just started serving on the Aging Resources of Central Iowa Advisory Committee.
Good.
And will continue to do that as a volunteer. So I will touch base with you about my personal contact information. So if there's information, as a representative from Story County, if there's information that needs to be brought to that committee, I'm happy to do that as well, so.
And I know in the past couple years, every time we've called you because there was a disaster, because there was a program that needed a sponsor, or this or that came up, how much you just, you always step forward and say, we can do that. And we have appreciated that. And Laura, we know you will continue.
Yep.
In Kalen's footsteps. You had a good teacher, a good mentor, and we were glad you're here to continue Kalen's great work.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Consideration of minutes from both 11:04 and 11:05?
I would move approval of both sets of minutes.
Okay, and I would second that motion. Any discussion? If not, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next, we have personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as presented.
And I second that. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved, and on to claims.
I'd move approval of claims as presented.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. And are you pulling anything from consent agenda? Nor am I.
I would move approval of consent as presented.
Second, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda items are approved. Now we will go to public hearing items. The first one is consideration of the proposed development agreement with the Story County Housing Trust, Leanne Harder from Planning and Development. Good morning, Leanne.
Good morning. Bryce will help me through this. I just do have a few slides for some background information in that this is the first time the Board of Supervisors has considered this type of a TIF agreement with a outside entity. I also, just for information, if the Board does have any questions about our entire economic development program and urban renewal area, those slides you've seen several times are at the end of this presentation, so we can refer to those as needed. But the, if you want to go to the next slide, the next one, too, please. The name of the project that we are building into our urban renewal areas, the LMI, or Low to Moderate Income Housing Program. The description of the program is that the county is acknowledging the importance of the availability of safe and affordable housing to families of low and moderate income to the promotion of economic development in the county. Under this LMI Housing Support Program, the Story County Housing Trust will provide economic development, forgivable loans and/or grants to cities with qualifying projects for the redevelopment, rehabilitation, and redevelopment of housing that is affordable to families of low and moderate income. The description of the use of the TIF that is outlined in the TIF agreement is that, again, the county intends to enter into an economic development support agreement with the housing trust with respect to the administration of the LMI Housing Support Program and to provide an annual appropriation economic development payments. Those payments will be funded through incremental property tax revenues to be derived through our urban renewal area. It's anticipated those county, the total county, county's total commitment of those incremental property tax revenues with respect to the LMI Housing Program will now exceed $1.95 million. And then the detailed programming guidelines are yet to be developed. Those will be developed following this action between the Board of Supervisor and the Story County Housing Trust. Those will set forth eligibility criteria, application procedures, funding priorities, monitoring, reporting agreements. And then this agreement will then need to be modified and amended to define those program guidelines. So those are steps yet to come from this process. There are four semi-annual economic development tax increment payments built into the agreement. The aggregate total amount that shall be made in any one fiscal year would not exceed $975,000. Again, over the total terms of the agreement. Again, over the total terms of the agreement, the payment shall not exceed $1.95 million. And all payments that will be made under the agreement are subject to annual appropriation by the Board of Supervisors. So with that, a legal notice was published. You can go back one more, please. Thank you. Legal notice was published for today's public hearing on November 13th. After you open the public hearing and receive comments, you'll be, the action you'll be asked to take will actually be under additional items to approve the agreement. That's resolution number twenty-six dash thirty-five. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, just a process question. So, but this item.
This is just the public hearing?
This is just.
You're just receiving public comment right now? There's a resolution under additional items, correct?
What is the charge for the housing trust to? Do we have that settled yet?
It, again, is the Low to Moderate Income Housing Program and those program guidelines will be developed following this action.
And that includes what the housing trust will charge for administering it?
Correct.
Okay, so, because I was looking in the agreement, could not find that. So that will come later.
It'll be a determination what county staff and others can offer to the program as well as what the housing trust will be charging through administrative fees.
Okay, so there are fees that would come back to the board at a later time?
Right.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
I do not.
I do not either. So this is a public hearing item. So I will open the public hearing. And if anybody in the room wants to make a comment, you can come forward and please turn on the microphone and introduce yourself. And if there's anybody online who wants to make a comment, please raise your hand. Morning again.
Morning.
Marty Chitty, Rural Route Two, Nevada, going back a few years. School Board President of Nevada Community Schools. Now, when we got our notice, it was sent to board members and the superintendent. I did, took advantage of previous employment here and went to the Assistant Auditor to ask an explanation to how that would be impactful as Nevada is a school district with a number of TIF zones in it that are contributing to the dollars that you're talking about expanding. So through the course of parsing through a very unclear body of law, which TIFing is, it's, if somebody tells me they understand TIF law, I'm going to challenge them because I suspect there's corners they don't. But as best could be determined, you have me at a disadvantage because I would have asked to have Lisa Markley join me today to give me the number that she provided me with, and she said there's a plus minus to it. But you have four more years at full tax takings from your existing structure of your TIF zones and it will be, it will step down from that point on. The cost to Nevada school districts, as I have been made to understand, it will be $33,000 a year. Now, we are in kind of uncharted territory in our district as we lost over 50 students in our enrollment just this year, which we always go plus minus, but when you, it's a very sobering thing when you take 52 students times roughly $8,000 on state aid, that puts us in a very upside down budgeting situation. So I would tell you, any dollars that could be brought to the district would be welcome. As far as the mechanism for us being able to acquire those dollars, as I was made to understand it, and I may not be clear on it, and I would also defer, as I've said to you individually today, that Mrs. Markley would be the person I would seek out to tell you when I quote, when I say 33,000, that's after the state backfills of what the state does, but they don't hold the district completely harmless and we, on a contributing basis, put dollars in. My ask is on behalf of the patrons, the students, the taxpayers in Story County's district is to leave the dollars there for us to take as we will need them. When I'm upside down 400,000 plus on dollars that will come in this spring and asking for just a retention of 33,000, I think it's a modest ask. I get LMI. We're doing LMI Nevada. I work with Craig Henry at Story County Housing Trust Fund. I do a lot of the HVAC in my job to put, make people that are in dire straits remain in their homes. I see what happens. I was on that board two and a half years. I have that time spent too. It is a worthy cause. They do great things in a very quiet corner and they make people have the ability to stay in their homes that otherwise wouldn't. I'm torn between applauding what you're doing, but in turn, I'm also wearing another hat and asking that you help us because to me, and this because of the separation, it's a binary choice. You can, if you can walk and chew gum, is there any way that we could be made whole on this one and still fund them? I don't know if you can parse it in that way, such that, once again, if I had Mrs. Markley sitting here, she'd probably shush me twice. But what I'm just saying, we, as I've been told, we are going to lose on tax takings on a per year basis, the remaining four of the full tax acquiring ability for the county that we will leave 33,000 on the table per year.
Do you have any questions?
Got nothing else. I think we had a very robust conversation. I appreciate your time. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Marty. You too. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to make a public comment? And is there anybody online? Bryce, did you see anybody? Okay. I don't see anybody either. I will close public hearing and we have another public hearing then.
Madam Chair. If I may, just for transparency, I forgot to say it at the beginning, I serve on the Story County Housing Trust.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for saying that for the record. Okay, Leann. Here's to the next one.
So this public hearing is for consideration of resolution number twenty-six, twenty-six dash thirty-eight for the Urban Renewal Area Plan Amendment for the Story County Urban Renewal Area. This is the formal procedure you go through to actually amend the urban renewal area plan so that you can enter into a TIF agreement with Story County Housing Trust.
Sorry to interrupt you. The agenda says twenty-six dash thirty-five.
It's twelve-two.
We're in the public hearing.
I'm on the wrong item. I apologize.
Nope, that's okay because I think I did that earlier in my presentation as well. So again, this is amendment to the plan prepared to facilitate the undertaking of a new urban renewal project in the urban renewal area that consists of providing tax increment financing support to the Story County Housing Trust. Copies of the amendment, the notice of the public hearing and notice consultation meeting with respect to the amendment were mailed out to the appropriate affected taxing entities. Consultation meeting was held on November 4th in this room. We did not have anyone in attendance. We did get one written letter received from the Nevada School Board, which I did forward on to the Board of Supervisors upon receipt. I did also follow up with Dr. Steve Gray acknowledging receipt of, receipt of those comments. If, I do have it on my phone if you want me to read that in the record, but it is part of the packet we'll deliver as well. Notice of the public hearing was published on October 30th of today's meeting in accordance with the requirements of the Code of Iowa. The resolution before you defines that the amendment and the projects and initiatives described therein conform to the general plan of the county as a whole. The proposed economic development projects described in the amendment are necessary and appropriate to facilitate the proper growth and development of the county in accordance with sound planning standards and local community objectives. And that it is not anticipated that families will be displaced as a result of the county's undertaking under this amendment. And should such issues arise with future projects, the county will ensure that a feasible method exists to carry out any relocations without undue hardship to the displaced and into safe, decent, affordable and sanitary housing. After you open the public hearing, receive comments and close it, will be, staff is asking you to consider approval of resolution number twenty-six dash thirty-eight. Are there any questions?
Questions? I have none. And I will open the public hearing. So anybody who wants to make comment on this, if you're in the room, please come to the desk and if you're online, please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and we will go on to additional items.
Nope. Yep. Yeah, we need to, we need a motion just to, to approve the resolution or.
It's down further. It's under additional items, isn't it? No, this one is here. I am sorry. I thought they were both under additional items. It's okay.
And if I could just make a quick comment, I just, for clarity, want to state that that this program has been in place for 12 years, 12, since 2011. We're not talking about doing anything different than has happened over those past years. We're just talking about assigning these potential funds to different types of projects. So it's not additional funds that are coming out of anybody's budget. And they are anticipated funds. They are not existing funds in anyone's budget. So I just want to make clear for the record, this is not anything new or different that we are doing. We are just taking the funds that we were assigning to different community projects that are valuable and are important. And we are assigning, we are looking to assign them to creating more affordable housing. And in every single conversation I have with every single resident and every single representative of a community and school district, they all recognize the need for LMI housing throughout the county. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Appreciate that, yes. And we're not, yes, you're right. We're not taking any funds from any other entities.
Right.
And, okay. And I'm sorry about the confusion on the agenda. I was thinking that both of them were going to be later. So let's, we're still on item on 12-two, so I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of resolution twenty-six dash thirty-eight.
Okay, and I would second that. Any further discussion? If not, Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Resolution is approved. Now we'll go to additional items. And first we have County Engineer Darren Moon.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What we have here is a pre-construction agreement from the DOT. As you can see on the picture here, I believe this is the last phase in the I-35 widening the DOT is doing. Originally, they had this four or five years out in their program, but they said, I think they found some extra monies. They're trying to push it up in the program. So we might start seeing some of this work in the next two to three years. There's a couple of things that will impact county roads, so just wanted to point that out to you before we approve the agreement. But other than that, I don't see any issues with the agreement. I'm going to zoom up kind of in the middle area here. Go to the next slide for me, please. Thank you. Couple of things that will happen as part of this stretch, they're going to six lanes that have to widen everything out. This is a bridge to 90th Street. The DOT owns the bridge over the top of the interstate, but it's a county gravel road on both sides. That bridge will have to be replaced to get the new lanes underneath it. So this road will be closed when that happens for most of the year, when they do a large bridge project like that. Won't impact a ton of traffic. Probably the main thing is the city of Ames water treatment is there. A lot of the Ames employees come up the Ames private road here, but they have other ways to access it, so it shouldn't be that big of a deal. The biggest change to county roads will be this 564th. It's just kind of a loop road here. It connects into 560th. There's really no reason for anybody to use that other than landowners on that road. In widening the interstate, they will, they need to remove the north-south stretch here That will leave this property here and there's one home that exists here. It's the same property owner owns both those lots. That will end up being landlocked. That is something the DOT will take care of in their right away negotiations. So there won't be any involvement with the county on that. But they're just asking that the county take steps to vacate this stretch of road after they get the landowner lands purchased to do that. I would expect that to be in the next year or two.
So we wouldn't act till after DOT had some resolution with the landowner?
Correct. We won't really be able to till we know what's going to happen.
Can I ask one more question? With that bridge being out of, out of order in the Ames water treatment, is that going to create more pressure on that one bridge that is questionable?
I think most of the Ames employees use that now because they like to use as much pavement as they can to get down there. So most of them use it now with the regular vehicles.
Okay.
I don't see a lot of additional traffic. There's a lot of construction going out there right now and all that traffic's using the private road because they know they can't go over the bridge. Hopefully, that should be done before this starts. But so, yeah, I don't see it being a big issue. Hopefully that, we don't have any issues with the bridge before then because right now it's able to take car traffic without a problem.
And they're talking about replacing that bridge, not the one over I-35. It's a replacement, not a removal.
I believe it's the last bridge. They've got all the rest of them widened to complete this project. So this is the last bridge. Other than that, there was a newer home right here, but about 10 years ago, the DOT purchased that in preparation for this and that landowner built a new home right here. So DOT has been planning this for a long time. But other than that, I don't have anything to point out. Just we'll have a hearing at some point to vacate this stretch as soon as the DOT lets us know it's good to go. And they did verify if it becomes a negotiation where they have to build an access to a property or something, the county will not have to pay for that. That's a little deceiving when you read the agreement, but I've got that in writing from the DOT that the county will not be on the hook for any of those costs if it comes to that. Other than that, I recommend approval of the agreement.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I would move approval of the Iowa Department of Transportation Preconstruction Agreement for primary road project on Interstate I-35.
And I would second the motion. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Agreements approved. Thank you, Darren. Leann, welcome back. So we are looking at resolution twenty-six dash thirty-five. What else is there to say about it?
Not much, just that staff recommends approval of it. This is formally approving the development agreement and that would then authorize the signature of Story County on the agreement as well.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Entertain a motion then.
I would move approval of resolution twenty-six dash thirty-five.
And I would second that. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. No? Thanks, Leann. On to IRVM, Ty? Good morning. It's still morning.
It's still morning.
We're doing okay. We're doing okay.
Morning Board.
Morning.
Hi.
I trust you got a copy of the report I submitted? All right, so 2020, for Weed Commissioner, I wasn't at that meeting, but overall, just kind of a steady, kind of to a light year, still just kind of monitoring kind of some species that are kind of trickling in, that's going well. One of the highlights of that report was we're kind of, now that we're kind of settling in, being full-staffed and me transitioning, we're kind of shifting kind of efforts into what we feel is kind of more of a priority, so we're doing a lot more noxious weed spraying, a lot more kind of in the spring, and then we're also doing a fall application there, so, over the last couple of years, and then up to just this last year, we over-doubled the amount of miles that we've sprayed for noxious weed, so before, the effort was just kind of for blacktops, but you know, there's a lot of other gravel roads out there in the county, so at least kind of getting those on a cycle, to at least, we have staff that are driving some of those roads and just kind of making sure that we're not missing any big outbreaks anywhere, so that's kind of been the effort moving forward. Brush spraying efforts, our contractor didn't quite get to the south half of Story County, that was supposed to be done this last fall, I kind of just ran out of time, so he will cover that early spring this next year, kind of before crops go in, so. Our staff did kind of some sensitive sites, we sprayed a couple of the areas that the secondary roads did some mowing in, just kind of round some of our interesting landowners, but like I said, mentioned, our focus this last fall was just on noxious weed applications, so. Like I mentioned, fully staffed now, so just kind of transitioning into work priorities, we already got seasonal job postings ready to go for next year already. Seed harvests this fall, like you guys know, two-seed nurseries from a private landowner, we are awaiting seed analysis for those, but we did harvest 1,242 bulk pounds of prairie seed from those two sites, and that was an increase of over 100 pounds from last year, so kind of timed it right, usually, we get a weather event where the wind picks up or it rains, and we kind of lose some, but we had a really good fall this year. Hand harvest events, we had a couple ones that County Conservation put on, and then some areas that we hand harvested with conservation staff, so 16 different species collected, that will get kind of cleaned, processed, and then that will go back out into county right-of-ways. So seeding work, kind of cleaning up some of the work order kind of system, some of the smaller ones, so we got quite a few work orders done this fall, like I mentioned, mostly kind of small sites, older kind of sites, things of that nature. Prescribed fire, generally, I usually don't like doing a lot of roadside prescribed fire in the fall, just because that's taking away from habitat from a lot of our critters out there, so we'll mainly focus on helping Conservation do some of their wet, wet sites that they can't do, you know, in the spring, so. Equipment rental, was kind of slow, we had a whole gob kind of come in just this last week, kind of now that soil temps are dropping, so a lot of folks putting in cover crops and waterways and things, so that'll pick up here for a couple of weeks until it gets too cold, but that's going well. Drainage District Maintenance, we have, there should be Grant 5 on there too, but those, those five drainage districts are gonna be sprayed next spring, summer, kind of depending on weather, talking with Scott, some of those drainage districts do have monies available, so he was thinking with kind of what I was kind of guestimating, that those accounts should have funds available, we shouldn't have to levy anything. And then, next year, there's another five that are due, I met with the contractor last week, kind of taking a look at those, and we're gonna get some bids back, and then we'll see on those next five for maintenance spraying, if we need to levy anything, so we're getting those going. And then Lincoln 91, Richland 68, those are ones we've usually sprayed in-house, they're pretty small, obviously, but we'll just kind of monitor those moving forward, so at this time, everything kind of minus, you know, our Warren 11 friend, everything should be in a spray maintenance program, so we'll keep everything kind of tidied up, since we've done all the brushwork, we're kind of to the point now, it's just kind of maintenance schedule, so, so good shape there. Kestrel box program, kind of report on those, like I mentioned last time, we had 33 boxes that we rebuilt and installed throughout the county and kind of the road right-of-ways. Steve Lequa, we took a bunch of pictures, had one of my interns actually use a selfie stick to take a bunch of pictures inside of kestrel boxes, just so in case there was anything in there, or, you know, harassing them. So Steve Lequa looked through all those pictures, so 27 of them did have nests, which is real good sign, mostly tree swallows, starlings, a couple house wrens, six boxes didn't, didn't have anything in there, then we had, we did have one box that Steve was thinking could be a kestrel, there were some small bones in there, as you know, some sort of predatory bird would have grabbed a little meal in there, but didn't see any feathers, wasn't an egg, so couldn't quite confirm, but there was kind of a good sign that could be, so that's kind of a good sign, but, so, we won't move anything quite yet, we'll clean them out, we'll put new nesting material here in a couple of months, get them ready for next year, and then just kind of monitor, kind of for there, but pretty exciting. And then, yeah, just kind of winter projects here, the next couple of months, like I said, kind of cleaning up file and records, maintenance repairs, we're still working on kind of the website, and then just kind of working on some trainings and some other licensing, so. So that's kind of a end of summer report slash winter report, so.
Sounds like a very busy quarter.
Yeah, so, weather, weather's been pretty, pretty good lately, so, but we're ready, ready for the winter, so.
Question on the seeding, particularly in right-of-ways, what percentage of the county's right-of-ways have we seeded in natives? You have any idea?
Two natives.
Yeah.
Wait, that's a good question. Since IRVM probably started, I would maybe guess estimate probably 25 to 30% since the late 80s, some of that's, you know, kind of overtaken, kind of with some cool seasons and stuff, you know, it wasn't maintained or managed properly, but I think if you look at the seeding reports from our department over the last 35, 38 years, I would say an easy 25 to 30%, or at least a good third.
Just wondered if there was plans or room to do more on that?
So, kind of one of my plans moving forward, Joe wasn't really a big records guy, a lot of the stuff was kind of, you know, upstairs, so what I was kind of been doing this last summer, kind of a rainy day project, was kind of looking at, because we have maps that show all these areas that were seeded, you know, granted, some still have natives, some, you know, he can't find a single, you know, blade of switchgrass, so kind of looking at some of those areas, and then kind of grading them, braiding them, and then trying to get kind of an inventory, because then we'll have basically like a big Excel sheet that has, you know, this road from here to here, still in good natives, and then all your management kind of goes off that inventory, you know, Joe's inventory was kind of all in his head.
Yeah, yeah.
He knew where everything was, all, where we burned the last, all that different stuff, where to mow, where, you know, so, but I want to get everything kind of on record, and then kind of the management goes from there, so kind of taking an inventory of what all's been seeded, what's still in okay shape, what's kind of goner, what's, you know.
Do you go through, the seed that you harvest, do you go through it every year, or do you still have a fairly good-sized stock on hand?
We go through quite a bit, usually, the agreement with Cindy Hildebrand is, she has earmarked half of it, and then kind of for her purposes, she works with Conservation Corps and things a lot, usually, she just says, go ahead and use it, you know, she can't find a home for it, but we get through most of it, and a lot of times, the last couple of years, at least, we've ran out, so.
So we've got some, some plantings too, Conservation has, don't we? How, what are we doing with those, are we harvesting from those yet?
I know we've used some of our harvested seed for some touch-up spots on the Prairie Rail Trail.
Oh, good.
We've used it for some of kind of the shoulders on the Heart, Heart of Iowa Trail down there, there's kind of some bare spots that we've seeded, our harvested seed has been to Deppy, Skunk River Flats, kind of here or there, so some of that stuff we do harvest from Cindy's does get out into conservation areas too.
Okay.
So it kind of, wherever kind of the need is, but the large lion's share does go out in the right-of-way.
Okay, super, I don't have any other questions, did you? Okay, thanks for the report. Okay. So we have no other reports listed, upcoming agenda items, Supervisor Faisal, do you have any? I don't either, so then we'll go to public comment number two, and this is comments from the public, for items not on the agenda, the more may not take any action on comments due to requirements of the open meeting law, they do so in the future, open public comments, is there anybody online with a public comment? I don't see anybody in the room here. Seeding none, I will close public comment and go to Liaison Assignments Committee Meeting Updates and Announcements from the Supervisors, Supervisor Faisal, what do you have for us?
I will be at the groundbreaking in Gilbert this afternoon, and then in Grimes this evening for my CERHA meeting, tomorrow morning, we have an IT recognition first thing, and then I have a meeting at the Sheriff's Office after that, and then we're starting interviews for BA Commission, so I have a couple of interviews tomorrow afternoon, planning to be here for the Resource Recovery Recycling Plan Meeting Wednesday night, I have a personal appointment Thursday morning, and then we'll be here for the Department Head and Elected Officials Meeting in the afternoon, and then depending on how long that goes, I've got the Hunger Collaboration Meeting Friday, we have a Go Green Tea Meeting, a Wellness Committee Meeting, and a Housing Action Plan Meeting. And Monday, I will be in Eldora for Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Policy Meeting, and that is my week so far.
Okay. I have some meetings this afternoon, and I'm gonna attend the Ames City Council Meeting tonight, and I may make it to Nevada, in the mean, if I have time in there, I may make it to Nevada for the groundbreaking they have.
Gilbert.
Let's see, Nevada, Gilbert, thank you, thank you, and tomorrow morning, recognition, and Storycom Quarterly Meeting in the afternoon, and then in the evening, we'll have the Resource Recovery Meeting here with the mayors, and Ames giving a presentation, Thursday, Department Head, oh, I have a meeting in the morning in Ames, and on some housing issues, in the afternoon, Department Heads, Elected Officials Meeting. Friday, I have an Alliance Board Meeting in the morning, and I will be off on Monday. So, that's what I have. If there's no other business, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye, we're adjourned.